I call to order the City of Buellton's Planning Commission for Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He will rise with me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Block, right?
Here.
Mr. Liggett?
Here.
Mr. Sarkia?
Here.
Vice Chair Mercado?
Here.
Chair Hamel? Here. I don't believe there's a reordering of the agenda tonight. We do have a last-minute presentation, I believe, by the Sheriff's Department.
Lieutenant Valencia.
Lieutenant Valencia.
Can you guys hear me? Madam Mayor, welcome. Council, honorable council. My name is Mark Valencia. I am the Central Stations Lieutenant, essentially your Chief of Police. And so we'll go over a lot later on another agenda, but I just want to introduce myself to you. And we're going to make a couple changes within the Sheriff's Department. I've only been here a few months. But what I'd like to do is since the county or the city is already paying and in a contract with a deputy sheriff assigned to Buellton, our current rotation is we don't have a permanent deputy. We don't have a deputy that you pay for by face, by name, that's able to help the city when they have their issues. So I am changing that and I'm going to introduce Miguel Lozano, who will be assisting the city and he's going to be our permanent assigned on his squad, specifically with the responsibility for Buellton. Now, the long-term goal is you guys at one time had a motor officer and we intend, once our staffing is restored, to have a new motor officer in it. That's also his long-term goal, but I'd like to establish him and embed him in the city now to address the issues and understand the needs of the city so we can get that ball rolling. The sooner the better. We're in changing times. Changing times of law enforcement has been trying for all of us. But together, we're going to address the issues of crime and think nothing's going to change. We'll go over other things later on a different agenda, but I wanted to get this out today because it's your welcome to the show. And careful what you wish for, but we're going to work on this together. So he'll say something really quick and we're, we'll be done.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, Council. My name's Miguel Lozano. I've been in law enforcement for about ten years. So I'm excited for this opportunity to build these relationships and I look forward to the, the interactions we'll have in the future. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome to Buellton. Okay, approval of the minutes from the last meeting, November third. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, public comments. This is, uh, this is, this is for members of the audience wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters not on the agenda. So, so far I have a lot of speaker slip or one of the items on the agenda. So this is for not on the agenda. No action will be taken, but if you have any comments on other items, other things going on in the city, this is your time to do so. And is there anyone that wants to come up and fill out a speaker slip later? Does not look like it. Okay. Consent calendar none. Continued public hearings none. Okay, new public hearings. And Planning Director, can I read these two together? Sure, number two and three. Okay. Resolution number twenty-two dash eleven, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Buellton, California approving the mitigated negative declaration twenty-two dash M N D dash zero one and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Buellton Garden Apartments Project located at ten McMurray Road, Assessor's Parcel Number one-three-seven dash two-zero-zero dash zero-eight-seven and making related findings under the California Environmental Quality Act and resolution number twenty-two dash twelve, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Buellton, California approving a final development plan twenty-one dash FDP dash zero one and tentative parcel map three-one-zero-six-three for the Buellton Garden Apartments, an eighty-nine unit affordable apartment project located at ten McMurray Road, Assessor's Parcel Number one-three-seven dash two-zero-zero dash zero-eight-seven and making findings in support thereof. Ms. Morales?
Good evening, everybody. Chair Hamel, members of the Planning Commission. We all made it tonight. It's great. So our first item here, we're pulling up the PowerPoint four. And we have the Buellton Garden Apartments Project. The developer and the project architect, I believe, are joining us tonight. We have Jacqueline Polino and John Day from People's Self-Help Housing in the audience and is Alicia King? Alicia King from Revat Albrechen Associates, the project architect. And so we can see here on the vicinity map that the proposed project is located on a three-point zero-six acre parcel at the, on vacant land at the end of McMurray Road behind Albertson's. To the west of the project site is Highway one oh one. To the east is a non-conforming single-family house. And to the south is the San Inez River. The project site is outside of the floodplain and the project is proposed to be set back at least two hundred feet from the San Inez River top of bank. This project site is a portion of Site Nine of our Affordable Housing Overlay Zone and or AHAs, as you'll hear it called later. And that has a base zoning of general commercial, but the AHAs takes precedence when it comes to affordable housing developments such as this one. So next slide. The project description is that the proposed project would consist of a final development plan for the construction of an eighty-nine multifamily unit apartment complex with two three-story buildings. Also proposed is a tentative parcel map in order to split the project site into two parcels to accommodate the development of the two buildings in separate phases. And the development meets the requirements of the AHAs and the fact that it's at least twenty-five units per acre minimum. It's twenty-nine units per acre in this case. And that twenty, at least twenty percent of the units are affordable. And in this proposed project, a hundred percent of the units would be affordable to lower income. So the, the density here, the twenty-nine units, I would just want to note, is well under the thirty-six units per acre that was anticipated for this site under our general plan EIR. And so the thirty-six units per acre on the site was actually analyzed in that case, and they're proposing twenty-nine units per acre. The project is being submitted under Senate Bill three-thirty, which is also called the Housing Accountability Act. And this act prohibits the denial of an affordable housing development or the conditioning of such a development in a way that would render the project infeasible or would reduce the proposed density, unless the very specific findings can be made. So then the applicant has also made some requests under the state density bonus law, which the city's attorney has found to be in line with the state law and Buellton's municipal code and agrees that the request should be granted. And these requests I'll get into a little bit later on. Next. Okay. The site plan for the project, we can see up here. The two buildings are shown. Building A is to the left and building B to the right. Building A has an interior courtyard with shaded seating areas, barbecues and picnic tables, a half basketball court and a small play structure and also bike racks. Building B's interior courtyard is this grassy open area that also doubles as a fire lane. And that also has some shaded seating areas, barbecue, picnic tables, other amenities. There's two project driveway entrances off of McMurray Road, off of a proposed offset cul-de-sac that you see here. So the project has been designed and conditioned to meet fire department requirements for life safety concerns and emergency access. Connected pedestrian access paths are provided along the McMurray Road frontage and cul-de-sac and throughout the project site. The project would, in the conditions of approval as written currently, would provide access to the future river trail via a gate, and that's at the very southeast corner of the property. Where the mouse is right now. Yeah, the applicant would pay an in-lu fee for the connection path to, for the city to build that connection path along with the main trail. And that, that path and connection path that you can see on the southern parcel is not on the project site itself. It's on the lower parcel that is also owned by People's Self-Help Housing. Um, let's see here. Tentative parcel map, next slide. So it's, uh, might be a little confusing, but we do see the two parcels here. Just with the split down the middle, those are the internal drive aisles and parking areas. So parcel one would consist of the construction of building A and actually you can move to the next slide. Yeah, it shows it a little bit clearer here. So this is the portion of just the first phase and the first parcel of the project. So Phase One would consist of building A, a hundred and one parking spaces and then site and utility work. Building A would have twenty-one bedroom units, thirteen two-bedroom units and eleven three-bedroom units, including a manager's unit. Seen in the yellow color up there, that building A would also house the community room and kitchen, learning center and a computer lab. And these are all for just residents of of the development. This would also have three staff offices for the resident property manager, a visiting licensed social worker and resident services. Full floor plan of building A with the second and third stories are shown in the project plans. I just haven't shown them here tonight. Next slide. Building B would be built in the second phase with ten one-bedroom units, twenty-four two-bedroom units and eleven three-bedroom units. And then the remaining forty-seven parking spaces would be constructed here. And again, a full floor plan with the second and third floors are not shown here, but they're in the project plans. Okay, so these are the elevations for building A, the one that would be fronting McMurray Road. The architectural character here is agrarian and with materials such as stucco, cement board siding, board and bat and stone wainscott. Patios, private patios are provided for all the units on the ground floor and Juliet balconies, which are a little shorter than, than typical balconies, are provided on some of the second and third units just for decorative elements. Next slide. Up at the top there, you can see that Juliet balcony I was talking about. Some of the other detailing here are the decorative gable ends on the prominent roof pitches, the stone wainscoting on the columns and the patio walls. And a physical rendering or a physical, sorry, color and materials board of all of these have been provided and is available at the planning department if you wish to view that. In these renderings, we see building A. The first, we can see the view of building A as one would see it when entering the first driveway off of McMurray Road with the top right view. The second image there, as if you would continue down the cul-de-sac. The next would be building A as seen looking north towards Albertson's. And then the next would be building A as seen looking into the interior courtyard of building A. So the elevations for building B show more ground floor patios here and the Juliet balconies that you can see in the black. So I know it's a little bit small on here, but the building height for these buildings is sorry, a maximum of thirty-five feet is allowed in the CR zone per our municipal code. A majority of the roof lines for buildings A and B are at thirty-three point five feet, so below the thirty-five foot limit. But there are some roof pitches that are higher, forty feet, ten inches maximum for building A. And then here at building B, it's at forty-four feet for those roof pitches. So the applicant is requesting a height increase to be allowed under the state density bonus law. And again, our city attorney has found this request to be in line with the state law. Just as a note to on building B, so there are right now some open air walkways that you can see just on the upper and lower elevations there. And the building department has let us know recently that those have to be enclosed in order to meet fire safety. And so an exterior architectural change may be needed, just to let you all know here, but we feel upon initial review that the Planning Director could make that a minor modification after entitlements with the revised building plans. So that may be revised in the future, but hopefully it'll be a minor architectural character that change that won't come back to the Planning Commission. Uh, next slide. So here we have the renderings for building B as seen from different angles. The first looking north towards Albertson's. Actually, all, yeah, sorry, all of them looking north towards Albertson's. So just to note, in the preliminary review, there was requested a little bit more architectural detailing and variation. So they have come back this at this stage with a little bit more detailing and a little bit more color variation to these elevations for building B. So this is the lighting plan. The lighting plan and the project plans given to the Planning Commission also have the specifications on all the exterior lighting. And a photometric plan has also been provided. What these show are that and what is conditioned of the project is that all exterior light fixtures, including the parking lot lighting, the ballards and the exterior wall lighting will all be fully hooded and shielded three thousand Kelvin or less. And this is all consistent with our municipal code and community design guidelines. The photometric plan, what that shows is that no significant light spill over to the adjacent parcels will occur, which is especially important for that single-family home to the east of the project and for the river corridor. Okay, so the landscape plan here also provided in the project plans are the water usage calculations, which do show that the plants proposed are generally low water usage and they will not exceed the maximum water allowed. Maximum allowed water. Approximately twenty-one percent of the project site will be covered in landscaping, reinforced turf and play area, and the landscape requirement for, for this project site is five percent. As it sits in the commercial zone. Hardscaped areas make about up about fourteen percent of the project site. Street trees are proposed along the end of the cul-de-sac fronting the project as well as landscape buffers along the front of building A and around the sides of building B. Also, we have the open grassy area of building B's interior courtyard. And then shrubs on the adjacent parcel, the southern parcel along the projects. Yeah, south property line are to remain and additional coastlive oaks are proposed there. I'm just going to get into fencing details a little bit because I know there were some questions. So a six-foot wrought iron fence is proposed along the first parking area. If you can see the mouse there, along that first driveway entrance when you get into the project site. And then after where about where building B starts is a six-foot high CMU split-face block wall proposed along there, which continues down along the eastern property line. So that block wall continues all the way down that eastern property line. The southern property line has the six-foot high wrought iron fence wall. Or just wrought iron fence. And then the southern portion of the western property line where Andrea's mouse is right now, that has a CMU block wall, six-foot high CMU block wall as well. And let's see here. I'm just going to talk about the concessions that were requested under the state density bonus law a little bit here. So one of them is for the screening, a solid wall or landscaping to screen the parking areas. And so you see along the parking areas that no solid wall or landscaping has been provided. Instead, that is the six-foot high wrought iron fence. And that is one concession that's being requested under the state density bonus law. Another is landscape islands have only been provided at the ends of the parking lanes instead of throughout in order to increase the number of parking spaces. in order to increase the number of parking spaces. And then the two um two proposed electrical transformers have been placed to screen them from as much eh screen them from view as much as possible, but additional screening would have um taken away some of the open space, and so that has also been requested to be waived. Um another is the balcony, uh so that has re- applicant has requested to waive balconies, providing private balconies on the second and third floors. Instead, they've provided the Juliet balconies. That's all on that slide. We're getting I think to the end here. Uh the noise, a noise and vibration study was prepared by Ringcon consultants to analyze the potential noise impacts because of the location of the project near Highway one oh one and the commercial shopping centers. The noise study here concluded that with the mitigation measures that I've summarized here, the noise impacts um would be the exterior and interior noise levels would be brought to acceptable levels as per our general plan standards uh for residential development. And if you have any questions about those, I can answer later on. Uh but moving on to the traffic and parking study, that was done by Associated Transportation Engineers, ATE, the traffics uh cities traffic consultant, to analyze potential traffic impacts to the surrounding circulation system. The traffic study done for the project concluded that level of service C or better uh would be maintained for the cumulative plus project conditions for all the intersections that were studied. And that's with the implementation of planned city improvements underway currently um to the McMurray two forty-six intersection. So with the payment of the traffic improvement fee as a condition of approval to assist with the costs of those planned improvements, traffic impacts would be considered less than significant for this project. And um on this slide, I just wanted to touch briefly on the number of parking spaces proposed. Um they are proposing a hundred and forty-eight spaces, and that is um they're requesting the parking ratios of the state density bonus law to be applied. Um but they are providing more than in the state density bonus law. However, they're providing less than would be required typically in our municipal code. However, the traffic and parking study did touch on this, showing that the peak parking demand for the project would actually be um twenty-four spaces less than they are proposing. So peak parking demand for this project would be a hundred and twenty-four spaces. Yeah, okay, next slide. So the project is consistent with all applicable general plan policies, and all of the policies are listed in the staff report. Um but I've paraphrased a few key general plan policies here. So the first land use policy, L three, uh encourages residential neighborhoods to be within easy walking distance to businesses and the city center. And this project is within a quarter mile of uh the city's commercial centers and within a half mile of Avenue of Flags. Policy L six uh encourages higher residential development, higher residential densities such as this to be concentrated along major transportation corridors. And this project is adjacent to the one oh one off of McMurray Road and Highway two forty-six. The project is also consistent with policy L nineteen, which states that the form, scale, and character of new residential development be compatible with adjacent development. So being below the Albertson's Commercial Center. The project is of similar height and architectural character as adjacent commercial buildings. And then finally, um or sorry, la- secondly, circulation policy C two promotes alternative modes of transportation, which the project does so by um including connections to the Future River Trail, incorporating the sidewalk and bicycle lanes on McMurray, and promoting transit being within really easy walking distance of that Albertson's bus stop. Lastly, housing policy H four does direct the city to facilitate the fulfillment of its regional housing needs allocation or RENA, especially in regards to affordable housing. So the project being a hundred percent affordable will help to meet a very large percentage of the city's current RENA goals for lower-income households. Um on environmental, an initial study and mitigated like negative declaration or MND was done for this project. The public draft was circulated from October fourteenth to November fourteenth. And since November fourteenth, uh no comments were received regarding the MND itself. The MND found the project would likely have potentially significant effects to biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise and transportation. However, mitigation measures in the MND were identified that would reduce the significant impacts to a less than significant level. Uh the mitigation measures have been incorporated as conditions of approval for the project, along with some monitoring requirements. And with that, uh staff recommends the approval of the following two resolutions. The first resolution twenty-two dash eleven is to approve the MND first. And the second resolution twenty-two dash twelve is to approve the project's final development plan and tentative parcel map. Uh one final note I'd like to make is that a revision has been made to one of our standard conditions on project timeframes. So this is in regards to the tentative parcel map. Uh this condition was revised to extend that tentative parcel map development timeframe and expiration date to be consistent with the final development plan so that we don't run into a problem in the future where one expires before the other. We can bring them back if need be for um they would have the same um expiration date and the same one year, two one-year time extensions as a as the final development plan. So with that, my presentation is concluded. Um again, here with us tonight, before we turn it over to Commissioner questions and comments and public comment, um I'll bring up Jacqueline Paulino. She's gonna give a brief introduction to the project team and the company.
Testing, can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Paulino, and I'm the lead project manager on behalf of People's Self-Help Housing for the Beelton Garden Project. I'm really happy to be here, and I'd like to share a little bit about our company. Uh for those of you that may not be familiar with People's Self-Help Housing, uh we're the largest, we're the longest-serving affordable housing nonprofit organization on the central coast. Uh this um company was created in nineteen seventy, and our mission is to provide to build homes and provide services to strengthen communities and change lives. Um since the beginning, our company's mission has been to serve low-income households, families, farmworkers, seniors, and veterans. Uh today, we manage more than two thousand rental units and employ more than two hundred members of staff. Uh we have fifty-four rental communities in the Tri-County region. We serve San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties, and we've created twelve hundred homeownership opportunities. Uh we currently have seven developments in construction, nine in pre-development, and six in the early stages of feasibility. Not only do we build and manage beautiful, accessible neighborhoods, we also offer a wide range of services to promote health, well-being, and career success for our residents. We re- retain and manage the housing developments that we build, and through our onsite property management team, we ensure that the properties are and the residents and pro- the residents and the properties are well cared for. Um so all in all, People's Self-Help has the experience, capacity, and expertise to build the project, um delivering quality housing. And we have members of our team here this evening and available to answer any questions. Thank you for this opportunity to be here and for our project, and I would like to turn this over now to our project architect team from Revat Albert Associates. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we're shipping. Um I'm from Revat Albert. I'm the project architect um for the Beelton Garden Project. Um I'm here with Greg Revat, who is principal architect um for the company, and here to answer any questions if you have any, so.
Thank you.
Just wanted to put your mouth really close to the.
It is, but as small as fair. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Cara. Um questions from the commission? I will start with Commissioner Blockdike. Do you have questions for Cara and or the applicant architect?
I have a question for the architect for the applicant. Um today, we got a letter from uh WeWatch that analyzed the lighting scheme and proposed some changes which seem pretty reasonable and small. Is that something? I don't know if you can hear me or maybe I need to get up closer. Is that something that can be that can be accommodative?
Yeah, we can take any um.
Can you can you come up to the, can you come up to the mic? Thanks.
Um yeah, we we can take any, you know, anything like that into consideration, and if it makes sense, then then yes, and it sounds like it it does, so.
Oh, you you haven't seen the letter.
Um from today?
Yeah.
No. Yeah.
Okay. It looked minor, you know, changing a few light bulbs.
Yeah, that that would be.
And doing a little bit of screening, not 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 wholesale screening, but I think they were asking for the screening of the lights at Albertson's. Maybe you could work something out.
Okay.
And when I say screening, I mean might just be going up there and putting a shield.
A shield up, yeah.
Which couldn't be that much.
No, if it, it sounds like it might have, might have to uh coordinate that with the owners of Albertson's, but that's something we could get into, yeah.
That's my only question.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Liggett.
No questions, just think this will be a great asset for the employees and residences of the valley, so appreciate the project. Um I think you did respond nicely from the comments we made one a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
So that's all to say.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Sarkia.
Yeah, I like your project. Uh we need more affordable housing, and and you're bringing it. Uh I really appreciate that. And I saw a sample of the wall with the with the big rocks and everything. I really like that. I'm really getting tired of cinder block walls. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh Vice Chair Mercado.
Um I want to thank you. I think you took our recommendations and made it come to fruition. I did have two questions. Um one was the size of the kitchen, because there was uh consideration of not having a grease trap. So if it's a commercial kitchen, or is it a kitchen for five? So if you're gonna use it as a use for the residents, then I think you wouldn't have to have a, you know, a grease trap and.
Yeah, it's a, it's for the residents to use at the community center, so.
But just like for a group of five or party of two hundred?
Um well, that's up to your your programming, thanks.
Uh it would only be um the tenants, you know, that live in the buildings. I do not think it would be ever two hundred.
Okay, well, did you know, I'm just thinking long term down the road. Someone has to, because we always have the issue on the other side of uh hitting post, so. Uh and then uh safety issue was on the southwest corner. Um I know it was pointing out to me now that there's gonna be a block wall there, because it was extending just uh initially, it was just gonna eh have the chain link fence next to the water plant.
That one is proposed to be a block wall, yes.
Okay. Is there a reason or way that we can add some screening to that, or just some trees or something, just to break it up? Uh I also, the s- safety issue was that just with the chain link fence, just that, I mean, any kid could climb the six-foot chain link fence and get in there. So I was just thinking, we're in the corner where you have the three trees. Yeah, so along that wall, we're going north. If there's some shrubbery or something like to kind of break up the wall?
Um we'd have to look at the size of the drive aisle there and see if there's any room to to accommodate that, but we'll take that, we can, we'll definitely look.
Okay, and I.
Maybe they could grow a line or something.
Line, yeah.
Yeah.
Just that was, that was a concern, just mostly for safety, is just having the chain link fence there, and like I said, I can remember when I was a three-year-old living on a big farm. Uh I climbed a chain link fence and I got electrocuted in between a stallion paddocks. So people will do things, so uh other than that, I think you guys have took our recommendations to uh good use and uh we'll make this a nice project. I was a little concerned about the three stories, but looking at the story polls uh in in that area, I I think it'll be be good.
Thank you. Uh I just have a couple of quick questions. I'm not sure who's who can answer this. Um the timing of the phases, so that what is the timing between building, build, building A and building B?
At at this time, we're not sure that if we'll do it in one um uh phase or two phases.
Okay.
If we did it in two phases, there would most likely be two or three years between.
Okay.
Two. Um you know, the financing for this type of project is a very long and complicated one. Um so we are considering doing it just as one to avoid that
Okay.
lag and uncertainty, uh but we're we're just not sure. It'll depend on um some of the financing opportunities we're waiting to hear about right now.
Okay, and then if it were split into two, I think we asked this the last time, but I don't recall. If it were two phases and it's a couple of years in between, so say building A goes up on building B on the lot, um will like grass be planted, or will be it asphalted over or something?
Yeah.
Okay, be grass.
You know, our our tenants are very important to us, and we wouldn't kind of leave that, you know, just.
Right.
Next to them.
Okay, okay, great. Uh the other question is kind of just a silly question for me. Um are there are there tours available of your other facilities? Like, could you reach out to me and
Sure.
maybe my vice chair or any of the other commissioners and you can tour, you know, something? Okay, okay. I'm very interested in that, so, okay. Um and that's all for me. So at this time, this is a public hearing, so I will open it to the public, and um I don't believe there's anyone here in the public that has put in a speaker slip for this project. If if you want to, raise your hand and come on up. Okay, no. Okay, so that, with that, I will close the public hearing.
You got somebody back there.
Oh, okay.
I
Okay, okay. Well, um if you want to talk about this item on the agenda, okay, come up to the microphone, and you have a few minutes to say your thing.
Sure.
And um then you can fill out a speaker slip on your way out.
Okay, gotcha.
And so we just need, we need your name and address.
Of course. My name is Suzanne Lilly, like the flower, uh thirteen oh one McMurray Road, so on the other end. But my my main concern is traffic. And are they gonna widen the road? It's a cul-de-sac, so there's not even two ways in and out, if I'm right, if I've heard right. And and that's really it. What are they gonna do to accommodate the excessive traffic? Because you're talking about a hundred and nine spots on one place, and what was the other one? Forty-nine? That's a lot of cars, and we've already got the shopping center. So I've, that's my main concern. You know, we're getting a lot of clog. And I've heard rumors about another thing that could be clogging traffic off of McMurray, and it's already really bad within your village. I'm just worried about that. Somebody could address what you're going to do to make sure the traffic isn't backed up.
Okay, so so this is, we're not really supposed to do Q and As during this. This is just your comments, but since you voiced it, I believe we've already addressed the traffic and the, it it was in the presentation.
Did I find that in the minutes of the planning commission from last time?
You would find them in the the staff report in the packet that came out to us.
Okay, so we can get that at the planning commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
At the planning department, yes.
Not used to the procedure, but.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Uh are there any additional comments from commissioners? Mr. Blockdike?
Nope.
Mr. Liggett?
Nope.
Mr. Sarkia?
No, thank you.
No.
Vice Chair.
With that, unless you had a comment, I will make the motion.
I do not have any further comments.
Then I'll make the motion to resolution number twenty-two dash eleven as stated. resolution number twenty-two dash eleven as stated, and twenty-two dash twelve as stated to for approval.
Well, second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Mercado?
Aye.
Commissioner Liggett?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdike? Commissioner Sarkia?
Aye.
Chair Hammond?
Aye. Hey, motion, motions pass five to zero. Congratulations, and good luck, and we look forward to the project.
Look forward to the interview.
Great, thank you. Okay. When if there's anyone who doesn't want to stay for the next agenda item, I'll give you a minute to pack your things.
Thank you. Good job, thank you.
Cara, have you had a minute to collect your breath? Okay. Next item on the agenda, number four, resolution number twenty-two dash one-three, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Buellton, California, denying a conditional use permit twenty-one dash CUP dash zero-two and sign exemption twenty-two dash EXP dash zero-one for a new drive-through restaurant located at five-one-five McMurray Road. Assessor's parcel number one-three-seven dash one-seven-zero dash zero-four-six, and making findings in support thereof, Ms. Cara.
All right, let's bring up the PowerPoint first and. Great. Okay, so, um, an application has been submitted for a conditional use permit and a sign exemption for an in-and-out drive-through at five-fifteen McMurray Road. Go to the next slide. The vicinity map here shows, uh, that the project site is approximately one and a half acres off of McMurray Road on the former Parks Plaza Theater site. McDonald's is to the south, the Marriott Hotel is to the north, and further north, the Chumash Employment Resource Center. The Village Specific Plan area is to the east with the planned Cambria Hotel site directly across the project site and the Village Town Homes close by. Next slide. The site has a zoning designation of general commercial, or CR, which allows fast food restaurants with drive-throughs with a conditional use permit. The project would propose to demolish the existing building and develop a one-story, three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-square-foot restaurant building with drive-through and indoor and outdoor dining. Fifty-five parking spaces and a twenty-five car capacity for the drive-through are proposed. The hours of operation would be Sunday through Thursday, ten-thirty AM to one AM, and Friday to Saturday, ten-thirty AM to one-thirty AM. The project has also requested a sign exemption in order to allow a forty-five-foot-high pole sign and an increase in building signage to the maximum allowed, so that's the sign exemption would be for. Uh, next slide. And this table here shows the development standards for the CR zone and the project's pro- proposed consistency with those standards. So for lot areas, setbacks, landscaping, site coverage, and height limit, the project is consistent in all these areas. And the project also substantially complies with our community design guidelines. However, the project is inconsistent with certain general plan policies, which I'll go into later more on. Uh, so this is the revised site plan for the project. We have one driveway entrance and exit off of McMurray Road, proposed with three ten-foot wide lanes. So that's one inbound and two outbound lanes. The project would provide the fifty-five onsite parking spaces, which is more than double the minimum amount of spaces required per our municipal code. In the project's con- uh, conceptual and preliminary reviews, the planning commission had made comments on some concerns with pedestrian and bicycle access through the parking lot and drive-through and some insufficient bike, bicycle parking. So an additional bicycle rack has been added, doubling the spaces from four to eight. And, but all concerns still do exist between the proposed pedestrian paths crossing through the two, um, at two points through the drive-through lanes. And then, uh, the drive aisles of the internal parking lot loop. Uh, the drive-through entrance begins about fifty feet past the driveway and would accommodate up to twenty-five cars, which has been shown to be adequate for the maximum average line length at other studied drive-throughs of in-and-outs, um, in Southern California. And this is, yeah, in the project's traffic study. However, if more than two vehicles, uh, were to go over this capacity, the second car could impede onto McMurray Road. So an overstacking plan for the driveway or drive-through line has been provided. I'll show this on the next slide. Uh, so I've zoomed in here just to show the important parts. Um, showing that in the event of an overflow of cars past the driveway uh, entrance this portion here with the dashed line would be roped off and the cars directed into the internal parking lot loop. Um, this, however, would narrow the drive aisle a bit and may impede the flow of cars into, through and out of the site and impede access for McDonald's customers. Um, although this overflow stacking plan is unlikely, uh, it's unlikely to get this number of cars on an average day. This possibility is more likely on the week following a project opening. Uh, next slide. So one aspect of the site circulation I'd like to touch on at this point is the turning movements for vehicles entering the drive-through lanes. Uh, the city's traffic consultant, ATE, has found, as shown on this figure, that an average-sized vehicle would have a difficult time making that turn into the first drive-through lane. Uh, you can see the blue lines there, that would be the car's turning movement. And it does, um, cross over the concrete barrier dividing the two drive-through entrance lanes. And then the next slide. This shows the average-sized pickup truck in, uh, turning movements. And we can see that, uh, average-sized pickup truck would not be able to make the turn into the first drive-through lane at all and would have, would have a difficult time turning into the second drive-through lane. Uh, an average-sized truck would also not be able to stay within the inbound driveway lane when turning right to enter the site. So it would have to use part of the, the left turn outbound lane in order to make that turn, which would cause cons- conflicts and potential collisions at the driveway. Uh, next slide. So the elevations for the project are provided in the project plans. I've just shown the project rendering here. The commission had made comments during the conceptual and preliminary reviews regarding the desire to see more architectural uh, articulation in order to enhance the building's generic architecture. So revised elevations and renderings have now included stone wainscoting around the bottom of the building and the columns. And, and you can see on that, um, well, the south elevation, but you can't, on, on the, uh, right side of, of the image. An embossed palm decorative element is on that, uh, to try and address these comments. Uh, the project is proposing approximately twenty-three percent of landscaped area on the project site, whereas the requirement is for at least five percent. Previous commission comments were made on the desire to see additional landscaping, so tru- uh, street trees have been added along the Murray Road. But the same percentage of landscaping onsite has been retained. Next slide. So listed here are some key comments from the commission made at the conceptual review in August twenty-twenty-one, and the preliminary review made had this last, um, February regarding concerns on the project's impacts on traffic and circulation. And the rest of my presentation will focus on these concerns as the project findings for denial are based upon the project's anticipated traffic and circulation impacts. So the first concern here is the accessway between the project site, Marriott, and the Chumash Employment Resource Center. Now, private easement for shared access and parking currently exists between these sites. At the conceptual review, this access was proposed to be closed, but the planning commission did express a strong desire to keep this access open. So, um, sorry here. So the accessway, um, was revised to be kept open, and that was presented at the preliminary review. However, a letter was strongly, uh, received after that meeting from a, the law firm that represents Marriott and the Chumash Center, which strongly opposed a design that would maintain the current open access and easement. So that letter was attachment six of the staff report. An extinguishment or amendment of that easement would be required to the satisfaction of those property owners to remove that open access and would necessitate a design that would block regular vehicle traffic going between the project sites, perhaps only allowing emergency vehicles to access that. So this would mean that all project traffic would be going in and out of the sole driveway at the proposed project site. Uh, the second key comment from the commission was concern on the shared access easement between the project site and McDonald's. Being that McDonald's only entrance point is, uh, onto and through the pro- the proposed in-and-out project site, communication between McDonald's, the applicant, and staff has been maintained throughout this perm- permit process. However, a recent letter sent by McDonald's did state that their concerns that were previously expressed regarding traffic congestion at, and safety affecting their patrons' access to the McDonald's site still exist with this current revised, uh, plan. So the letter suggests from McDonald's further revisions to the site plan to alleviate these concerns. And that letter from McDonald's is attachment seven to the staff report. These revisions, according to McDonald's recommendations, uh, to alleviate traffic concerns would lead to decreased drive-through capacity, decreased parking spaces, and decreased landscaping for the project. The, uh, third comment here. The planning commission made known at the conceptual and preliminary review about concern for increased traffic at McMurray two forty-six and the two forty-six Highway one oh one off-ramps. So the next slide here. Um, I'll be going into that third comment, uh, mostly here. A revised traffic study conducted by an announced traffic consultant, the Gandini Group, was provided to staff on September thirtieth of this year. Uh, this revised traffic study attempted to address some data gaps and some accu- inaccurate assumptions in the analysis identified in ATE's initial peer review. Previously, the traffic studies, uh, had identified no significant impacts and therefore recommended no improvements. With this revised traffic study, however, significant improvement, uh, significant impacts to level of service queuing capacity and impacts from onsite circulation were identified. And improvements to address these impacts were recommended for the first time. So with the applicant's desire to schedule a public hearing, uh, soon after the revised traffic study had been submitted, the, these improvements have only undergone a, an initial review by staff and ATE. Uh, although recommended improvements have initially been found to be likely either infeasible or inadequate to address the identified impacts, further analysis would be required for the improvements as they would have implications to citywide circulation, um, not just the project. Many of these improvements recommended would also require Caltrans review and approval, which has not yet been undertaken. To note, a letter was also received by the Sheriff's Department, recently echoing the same traffic concerns as identified in the traffic study and some additional concerns identified in ATE's peer review. And this letter similarly anticipates that the project would create several traffic issues during peak hours. Excellent. So on this table, we see the estimated daily and peak hour vehicle trips that would be generated by the project up at the top. Um, underneath that, four other pipeline projects on McMurray Road, we see the the top and bottom numbers are what I'd like to focus on, as they show that the four pipeline projects, the Cambria Hotel, Buellton Garden Apartments, Polo Village, and the Village Senior Apartments, again, all along McMurray Road, have a combined number of trips that are comparable to the number of trips to be generated solely for in-and-out. This is across the board with new daily trips on weekdays, PM peak hour trips, new daily Saturday trips, uh, and in the si- Saturday midday peak hour. Because of the significant amount of new vehicle trips anticipated by the project, staff did require an analysis for intersection queuing, which is new for the city. Uh, this looks at the length of a road and its capacity to accommodate the line or queue of cars on a certain roadway lane. So this was performed for all lanes on McMurray Road, Highway two forty-six, and for the two forty-six Highway one oh one off-ramps, in order to show whether or not there would be sufficient vehicle storage length on all of these roadways to accommodate project-related traffic. There were impacts to queuing capacity found that I'll go over in the next three slides. So the first, uh, queuing impact found was for the anticipated length of cars generated from project traffic that would exceed the capacity of the two forty-six one oh one northbound off-ramp shown here. This off-ramp has, uh, storage length of eight hundred and ninety feet, and the anticipated car line length would be, uh, a thousand and hundred and sixteen feet, which would be on the, at the Saturday midday peak hour. So this would cause cars to exceed the capacity of the off-ramp and possibly back up onto the right-hand lane of Highway one oh one. This would be, um, significantly increased also at the PM peak hour. Um, anticipated to be eight hundred and seventy-five feet long with the project-related traffic. Uh, which is significant in, in this scenario. Um, the queue length for cumulative without project in the PM peak hour would be anticipated to be three hundred feet long. And cumulative with project is anticipated to be a car length of eight hundred and seventy-five feet long. So that's a significant increase in the line of cars anticipated for just project-related, uh, tra- traffic. Um, the recommended improvement here to mitigate this impact is to re-stripe the through slash left turn lane on the off-ramp to a shared through left and right lane, uh, turn lane. So, uh, to reconfigure this lane and add a secondary right turn on the two forty-six would require Caltrans review and approval. And additional studies would be needed to, um, analyze how this might impact citywide circulation. Next slide. The second impact found was the anticipated length of cars generated by the project at North McMurray Road at the through right turn lane shown here in the yellow. You can see, um, at peak hours, the line of cars is expected to reach two hundred, approximately two hundred feet. Uh, this would block the Taco Bell's, uh, sole access in the southern driveway for AOK. So the recommended improvement here in the traffic study, uh, is to install keep clear pavement markings at the Taco Bell driveway entrance, and these improvements have already are already being undertaken by the city as part of the planned improvements. However, this would, eh, this improvement would actually increase the queue. However, this would, eh this improvement would actually increase the queue length here. Um, and it may further impact AOK and the Motel Six driveway and potentially um cars turning left from Valley Vineyard Circle onto Southbound McMurray. So the impacts of this improvement as well would need to be additionally studied for impacts to businesses and Valley Vineyard Circle. Next slide. Um, alright. The third impact found was the anticipated length of cars added at South McMurray Road at the through right turn lane here. There would be a significant increase in car line length reaching to three hundred feet. And this would impact businesses with access on South McMurray Road. No feasible improvements in the traffic study for this impact could be identified. And alternatives reviewed would require additional studies, uh Caltrans review and potentially additional right-of-way on McMurray Road. Next slide. The fourth impact here, and this is um the last impact that I'll go over. This was found in the traffic study to the McMurray two forty six intersection. It was anticipated that with project-added traffic for in the future, that intersection would be at a level of service or LOS of D, which is unacceptable due um or per the city's general plan. And that impact of a level of service would exist with the planned improve, planned improvements underway by the city. So the traffic study recommended an additional improvement. And that was to install a southbound right turn overlap signal phasing, which translates into a dedicated right turn arrow uh for cars making a right-hand turn onto two forty six in front of the Taco Bell. This improvement, again, would require additional study for citywide circulation impacts and Caltrans review and approval. However, AT's ATE's peer review has found that this improvement would likely not improve uh the LOS to an acceptable level of C or better due to the queuing of cars on westbound two forty six. And so in front of Taco Bell between McMurray and the one oh one ramps. Because the the cars here often stack up and prevent a right turn on red and sometimes a right turn on green. So alternatives for the McMurray two forty six intersection have been reviewed by city staff and ATE in the past, but all have required additional right-of-way and significant roadway alignment changes. So general plan, policy inconsistency, and these are the three um policies that this project has been found to be inconsistent with. Uh, in light of the project's impacts from the proposed onsite circulation and to the citywide circulation system. Uh, first off, uh is land use policy L eleven. The project has been found that it does not incorporate a circulation network that is balanced, safe or has multi-route access due to the substantial conflict points for vehicles and pedestrians at the driveway, the drive-through and the drive aisles. Three policy, uh circulation policy C five. A level of service C or better would not be maintained at the McMurray and two forty six intersection. And neither planned nor recommended improvements would bring the LOS back up to a C or better. Lastly, uh C eight, the congestion levels with the anticipated queuing would be unacceptable and have not been found to have feasible or adequate mitigate mitigation. Uh, so staff has determined that four of the seven required findings for a conditional use permit cannot at this time be made. And these are that the site for the project is not adequate in size, shape, location and physical characteristics to accommodate the use and level of density uh development proposed. That streets and highways are not adequate and properly designed to accommodate the project. That the project will be detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, convenience and general welfare of the neighborhood. And the proposed uses will not be compatible with the surrounding areas. The end that the propose, uh that the project is not in conformance with the general plan. Last slide. So based on all of these, uh staff recommends the planning commission consider the adoption of resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, denying the conditional use permit and sign exemption for the project. That concludes my presentation. I will be available for any questions. Um, however, I would like to turn it over to Mark Levin from In-N-Out, uh the applicant. He has a brief presentation.
Thank you, Karen.
Can you guys hear me? Alright, perfect. Uh, Mark Levin, In-N-Out Burger, on behalf of the application. Um, obviously, I know that there's some disagreement with regard to the findings for staff, but I I want to take this opportunity to really thank you guys for your work. I I know we've been working on this for about a year and a half now. And uh, one of the other things that I'd like to note is taking traffic out of the equation for just a moment, there doesn't really seem to be much in the way of disagreement with regard to the benefit that In-N-Out Burger would provide. Whether it be jobs or tax revenue or just a simple amenity for people who want a a good meal at an affordable price. Now, with that in mind, uh it, I would not be doing my job if I didn't at least go over that in a little bit of detail. So. See once we get the, the slides up. Alright, uh next slide please. Uh, this is a picture of our founder, uh Harry and his wife, uh Esther Snyder. Uh, they founded in October of nineteen forty-eight and it's been a family business ever since. Uh, their granddaughter right now is the sole owner of the corporation. Uh, we have, as of just a few days ago, our three hundred and eighty-second restaurant. Every single one is owned by the corporation. We do not franchise and that allows us to maintain control uh of our quality through and through. Um, next slide, please. So, you know, when it comes to the various demand that we have, I I think that there's this natural desire to think of it as creating traffic, but I also would imagine the city council might think of that as creating new parks and creating other city services and all the other things that our tax revenue does bring. Overall, we create roughly sixty new jobs, give or take, depending on demand for every restaurant that comes about. Year in, year out, we're rated as one of the highest uh customer satisfaction companies and one of the best companies to work for. I think Glassdoor ranks us the number one restaurant to work for and then number three company across all industries to work for. Uh, we do this by taking care of our entry-level workers just as well as we take care of our higher-level people. We give uh employees a chance to get promoted and to grow within our company or to develop life skills that help them as they progress throughout their careers. Uh, I also wanted to mention the idea of what's called the indirect multiplier effect. For every job that is uh located here in Beelton or every new dollar that's invested in Beelton, it reverberates throughout the economy. Um, just using just a one of the random uh economic companies, it says every new job equals two point six jobs throughout Beelton. Um, you could find different numbers. They'll all probably say about the same thing. So with that, next slide, please. This is where we are within Beelton. And I know there's been some conversation about why we picked the location that we picked. And the simple answer is we wanted to be part of the community. We don't want to be on the outskirts. We want to provide food for the people here in Beelton and other local residents throughout San Inez Valley, Lompoc. Next slide, please. I I think this is important to note just why we specifically picked here and it's for the people in the red circle up there. Um, there's roughly, let's say, seventy, eighty thousand people between Lompoc and Lake Kachuma. And all of these people have to drive a good forty-five minutes, maybe longer during rush hour to either the Santa Maria location or the Glitter location down south. Uh, it it's been said that we're just exclusively a highway traffic place and that we don't care about the local area. That's categorically false. We have pretty good coverage on the one oh one. As you can see, between Rojo Grande, Santa Maria, Glitter, Ventura, there's about ten locations in total between Ventura County and just south of San Jose along the one oh one. By contrast, along the five adjacent area, probably only about three locations. So it, we really need the people of Beelton and the people of Lompoc and all the other different communities to eat at our restaurant for it to make sense here. And Beelton happens to be the best location for us. It's right in the center of everything and frankly, you guys have a reputation of being business-friendly and understanding business needs. So, next slide, please. This is a good location, Erica, time to discuss how we got here specifically. And this was our first site plan. I I like it. It shows a lot of green, but I think, you know, we could do better. Go ahead, next slide. So some of the main changes that we made here were to increase the drive-through capacity as much as possible. I believe this version showed twenty-six. We augmented it a little bit to bring it down to twenty-five. It's actually basically the same thing. We just, for the purpose of representation, there's one less car. Uh, we increased the parking. Ultimately, a lot of those properties that you see um in in other places in the state that have these huge lanes, they don't have appropriate parking. And what happens is if there is parking, people get out of their cars. People go inside the restaurant to eat there. It's almost always a shorter line. It's a little bit insider knowledge. Next slide, please. Uh, through this process, we made a bunch of changes uh to correspond to requests from the city staff as well as to McDonald's. Uh, starting at the top, um, the top left-hand corner is a little area where we added a fair amount of landscape, but more specifically, we made landscaping bigger and more prominent. So it might not show up in the percentage, but we certainly did a little bit to add to the look of of the building. What this area will do is it'll actually cover up the uh trash enclosure. So it makes it a little bit more beautiful from McMurray specifically. Uh, as Karen noted in her presentation, we are adding street trees. It's a little bit odd in in the sense that there's actually no street trees along any other part of McMurray anywhere near us. But again, this was a a comment from staff and so we're we're trying to be as cooperative as possible. Um, in the middle, we added, or I should actually say we subtracted a little portion of landscaping there just to make internal circulation a little bit easier. And the two southernmost circles here are uh comments that directly came from our communication with McDonald's. I I haven't actually seen the most recent letter. I imagine it's part of the staff report we just received a day or two ago. But one of their concerns was that we keep the main ingress and egress as open as possible. Uh, so the one at the bottom left uh does that. We removed two parking spaces from there to create a little bit less in the way of traffic movement right there. Uh, the actual look of it can still be changed. Um, we have that alignment there just because we thought it was the best from a circulation standpoint. But we don't mind working with the city engineer to augment that as necessary. We did also increase the width of the main drive aisle from just over twenty-five feet to thirty feet. Again, this was a comment from McDonald's. Uh, we do want to be good neighbors. We want to keep their um ingress and egress as open as possible. Um, a- and so we made this change. Uh, next slide, please. So, obviously, there is a bit of a disagreement with regard to our traffic study. And I want to touch on these topics individually. Uh, go ahead, next slide, please. The first one is honestly, it's it's kind of the hardest one for us to swallow just because I think the process here got a little bit out of whack. Uh, what we did in the early part of this back last year in November is we submitted what's called a scoping memo. Now, the purpose of these scoping memos is to determine basically the way the world looks. What needs to be studied? What intersections need to be studied and how they need to be studied? Uh, specifically, what types of uh data is necessary? What what cumulative projects are important? And what they do to the whole circulation system. This was approved by staff in early December and we submitted traffic uh impact analysis uh just about a month later or so. I believe ATE got it on their desk a little bit after that. And in June, uh, they frankly threw it out. They asked us to change all kinds of foundational elements of what it was that we were supposed to be studying, including when we took counts, where the traffic is supposed to be coming from, the amount of pass-by trips that it would have otherwise been. This, eh, the process isn't supposed to work like that. We're supposed to come to an agreement and then stick to our agreements. Now, interestingly enough, we still want to be cooperative, so we made these changes to our traffic study. And we, yeah, we resubmitted in July and in August, we kind of went through the exact same process again. Or suddenly, new requests came about. One of them was this intersection queuing analysis, which, again, we couldn't find it in any other example of traffic studies done in Beelton. Uh, it may exist, i- it might not, but we reviewed as many as we possibly could. We could not find a single example of this being done. Afterwards, you know, the thing that we're always afraid of in these circumstances, it becomes this question of what if? What if this happens? What if the worst-case scenario happens on the worst possible day and it's raining and it's a Tuesday instead of a Wednesday? And so that's why we are here right now because we wanted at some point to come to you guys as the commissioners and that you guys make the decision for yourself. Um, next slide, please. With regard to onsite circulation, I I think it's important to not let some of the other sites and some of the problems that you might see influence your decision here. Uh, specifically, this is our Santa Maria location and the area in red um is their improved area. It's roughly about forty-seven thousand square feet. And you'll notice there are uh approximately nine cars in the drive-through stack, maybe ten. That's all it holds. And if we were going through uh the ITE numbers, that's probably all it would require we do in Beelton. Um, next slide, please. This is our site. It is sixty-four thousand, six hundred square feet, plus or minus. It is literally fifty percent larger than the site that you guys are most used to. And that does a few things. One is eh the dedicated drive-through length is much larger. There are twenty-five cars in this particular uh arrangement. They don't interfere with the other parking spaces. Um, all the other parking spaces are going to be open at all times, whereas in Santa Maria, if it gets beyond, say, the tenth, eleventh car, people have a hard time parking. And yeah, next slide, please. And yet, even in Santa Maria, we don't actually have major traffic concerns. I I talked with our uh property managers. They've gotten no complaints from their local neighbors over the last two years. And that includes COVID. You guys see these people? They're really, really good at moving cars. They're really, really good at getting cars through the drive-through stack faster than our competitors. It's really, it's one of our competitive advantages, our people. Um, they are better at moving people around than any plan I could present to you or any striping on any, you know, patch of asphalt. They solve a lot of problems and the sixty-four thousand square feet of lot area that we have enables them to do their jobs. Next slide, please. So one of the points that that Karen mentioned is this idea of multi-access and In-N-Out is a little bit caught in the middle here. And I I, this is the part where I actually leave it to you, the commissioners, to kind of tell us what to do and In-N-Out is going to be flexible here. Uh, as Karen noted, I believe it was, was it L, uh, what was the actual L eleven? L eleven, okay. Um, the idea that the general plan asks for multi-access points, uh, we would kind of like to keep it that way. Now, we also want to be good neighbors and we understand the Marriott's concerns. So with that, I'm going to propose a few different selections and I'd like you, as the commissioners, to kind of pick which one you feel is most equitable. This is sort of the first option where basically stays as it is. We just add signage that tells people exit to the left, please. Uh, next slide. Option number two, it it's my personal rendering. It's not engineered. I promise it won't look exactly like that. Uh, it basically changes the landscape area to usher cars down towards our site. Uh, it does technically still allow for this cross-access and therefore would be compliant with the general plan. Uh, and it would allow emergency access vehicles to get through there without issue. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this would be a little bit more of a dramatic way of dealing with it where there's a gate with a knox box that again would allow emergency access vehicles to go through there, but it's sort of up to you whether or not that is compliant with the general plan. Again, I'll I'll let the the five of you make that decision for yourselves. Uh, next slide, please. Alright, so with intersection queuing, I I thought it was kind of interesting that within the staff report, it may mention a four pipeline projects. Um, we studied twenty-three projects when we did our cumulative analysis. Ultimately, I mean, I I do understand that some of these intersections are congested. That's that's real. Uh, but I think it's important to note that what we contribute to these, we don't cause them. There there is a difference. And it's within the idea of how the data is collected and using twenty three projects for cumulative analysis. Does sort of inflate what our contribution might be. Next slide please. For level of service, a, a lot of it kind of in the same breath here in that. As I look at the data, I, I don't see the cataclysmic uh traffic problems. I see it's adding a few seconds delay and that's all LOS is, by the way. It is a matter of. You know, an increased time uh on average at the worst hour of the day, or I should say the busiest hour of the day in certain turning movements. I, I see five to seven seconds on uh weekday P M and weekend average that we cause. Now, the cumulative data is a lot, but I, I mean, maybe I can make a deal. If we're just talking about four pipeline projects and that's, that's all we have to study, we can all go home. Because at that point, the data won't show any total impacts. Well, twenty three new projects that have all been approved relatively recently, that is where you're seeing the potential problem. Now, our traffic engineer has come up with certain solutions. If you have questions regarding that, I'll let him explain how they're effective. I understand that Mr. Poole doesn't necessarily agree with that. I believe that there's possibilities for multiple different opinions from our traffic experts. The last thing that I'll say here. With regard to the time delay at certain intersections, there is a trade off here. I, i- if people are waiting a few extra seconds for, you know, to make a turn on the worst hour of the day at one or two movements. The alternative is the hour and a half round trip commute that built in residents are making to go to either of other two locations. Um, i- if you're wondering just how many people make those drives. I was at the built in Fall Fest this last weekend. We literally ran out of paper before we ran a support. We had more people say, I want to sign something before I even said a word than people having issues with traffic. I understand that there might be some people behind me that have issues with traffic. That's totally fine. That is their opinion. I understand that. But please keep in mind all the people that want us to be in your town. The last thing that I'll say. In general, when it comes to these traffic assumptions that people make. Those assumptions are based on one principle and one principle alone, that we are going to be wildly popular with your residents. And frankly, I think that's the kind of business that Buellton wants and thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm here for your answers.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, um. We will turn it over to questions from the commission. Commissioner Block, questions for Kara and or Mark. Commissioner Leggett.
No questions at this point.
Uh, Commissioner Sarkia.
I remember last time you were here, um. And you wanted to close off the access from the hotel Marriott. But uh, we wanted to keep that open. Uh, the other thing I, I noticed that you want to use the uh, uh, the same access to enter McDonald's. But if you'll note that McDonald's uses that, that entrance and, and exit, but they also have their own exit. On the uh, south side of their property. I, I suggested that on the northwest side of your project or northeast, I believe. Um, that you have a separate entrance so that people could come in. Get into your restaurant and then come right out where the shared access with McDonald's is. Instead of having to make a sharp right hand turn and then a left hand turn. Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Chair Mercado.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Okay. Um. I don't think I have any questions at this time either. Um, I'm going to. Open it for public comment. And to start with, um, since maybe some of you are new tonight to a public hearing and to public comment. Going to just uh give a couple. I guess ground rules. Okay, you have to fill out the speaker slip and that's your name and address and which item. Uh, when I call you up to the speaker uh box, uh, state your name, address, which item. Um, we'll give you three minutes to comment, whether it's yea or nay or whatever. Um, I believe Claire or maybe Mr. Wolf is running the timer or something. Bear is running the timer tonight. Um, at, it is our responsibility, the commission's responsibility is to listen. We do not respond to your comments or debate them and it's not a question and answer period. It's just your comment. If we choose to address your comments in our later discussions, we will do so. Um, so with that, again, I'll open up the public here, a public hearing. And I see that I'm also going to do a little bit different here. I see on our request to speak, um, Jared Grand is in the audience. Um, I would like for him to come up first, um, because just so the rest of you know. Um, we've received many letters which will go into the public record. We do not read them. In a public hearing, um, but it was a really lovely letter from the fan, from the grand family. So, um, please start.
Thank you. My name is Jared Grant and I'm here to represent the interests of my mom, Diane Graham. Who is the owner of the Parks Plaza Theater. Approximately thirty years ago, my dad, when he was my age, purchased that theater um from Fred Frederick's. And expanded it from three screens to five screens. Kind of changed the type of movies that went in there to a more artistic type of movies besides the mainstream movies. And we enjoyed a very long and, and profitable history there and everything was, was, was very good. My father unfortunately passed away in two thousand and six and my brother Bobby, who's here tonight. And my brother Sean uh ran the chain of theaters uh along with my mom. And at one point, we had ten theaters, we had fifty screens and, and. The Parks Plaza was one of my, um, even though it was the last purchase, was one of my father's favorite theaters. He's, uh, as I mentioned in my letter, he's, he's buried off of a baseline at the Oak Hill Cemetery. Along with my brother Sean, who unfortunately passed away in twenty sixteen and he ran. The Parks Plaza himself from twenty, uh, two thousand eight to, to two thousand sixteen, um, before he passed away. Um, so this is a special area to us. That's a special property. We believe in and out is, is the special business. My. Father loved them not only as a patron, but as a small business owner, he loved their business model. He asked me at one point when I was in college to go work for them and try to learn what made them so successful. Um, I turned him down for a bike courier uh job, which was not a very smart thing at the time. Probably would have been better off at, at in and out. But I just wanted to let you guys know that we have done everything to try to make that theater profitable. It's no longer viable. We wish it was and we'd still be there. My brother would be running it. Um, as you know, and I, I, I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but I would imagine everybody in this room. Uh, you five included, subscribe to a streaming service such as Netflix or Hulu or Disney or HBO. The rise of the streaming service, the, the ability to have a large TV. Pictures become better, prices go down, the soundbar, more and more people are using home entertainment rather than going to theaters. That added with the labor costs, expenses, our profit margins kept kind of dwindling. And the stat bar and that's where we obviously make our money versus the box office where sixty percent or more goes back to the film companies. So over time, unfortunately, things just continued to shrink and, and pre-pandemic, we were not, we were not doing well. And then the pandemic hit, obviously just wiped us off uh the face of earth as, as affected many of our theaters and uh. Even our theaters that have reopened have not, uh, the level of business has not made it back. So I just wanted to explain a little bit about the history, how important it is uh to my family that, that, that property. Has been and to let you know that the viability of the movie business has unfortunately gone away. Um, we wish we, like I said, we were still open. Um, the last thing I'll just say is I just encourage you guys to work within and out to try to get through some of these solutions. It seems to me. Traffic is the major thing and I would hope that you guys can find a way to mitigate that and, and not just deny it, but to work with them and ultimately grant their conditional use permit.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Mr. Tom Davidson. And he reminds me that in my haste to get this project started tonight. I forgot to disclose that I had an ex parte meeting with Mr. Davidson on November eighth. So for the record.
Chairman, I also need to do that as well.
Okay.
And chairman, I have to do that as well.
Okay, if you'll enter that into the record. Okay, Mr. Davidson.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Tom Davidson. I'm a commercial real estate broker. My firm uh represents the grand family and the in and out folks in this project. Uh, I mean, th- this literally boils down to traffic. I'm an aerospace engineer by education and when we launch satellites, it's very exact. Traffic, not so much so. That's why when you hear Kara give her presentations, there's words like may impact, likely. I mean, this is based on a whole bunch of assumptions and my model versus your model and so forth. And really the almost appalling thing here is when in and out first submitted their traffic study, it's dated December thirty first. Two thousand twenty one. Ten months later, we got a peer review dated November fourth. Remember how the bowling alley took to how the city processed these things? I- in this peer review, there's a whole bunch of major traffic things that, that not even discussed. Um, In-N-Out has six locations and if th- that are fairly close, Camarillo, Oxnard, Ventura, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, Roy Grande, Atascadero. Every one of those things have one thing in common. They have one exit off the freeway. In our case, we have two, both of them equidistant. Nowhere in the peer review, nowhere in your. Uh, report doesn't say anything about Damasa. It's as though all of the traffic's going to come off on highway two forty six. So if you go out and look on the freeway going north, they're not even going to see the In-N-Out sign till after they're past two forty six. There's also a sign on the freeway that allows an In-N-Out uh logo on it. If you go north coming south onto Avenue of the Flags, there's two signs out there that would allow In-N-Out. Either direction, if you get over to, to Damasa, you turn right, you turn right into the project. There is no issue with two forty six and McMurray. Nowhere does the staff report or the A T E thing doesn't even use the word Damasa or Buell or whatever the name of that street is. So, um, I think it's just disingenuous. Um, and, and the other piece of this is, as he said, they need local traffic. It doesn't suggest or admit that the local people are going to figure it out. If I'm in Lompoc, can I come over here? I'm not going to go and turn left on McMurray. I'm going to turn up Avenue of the Flags, go across, turn right, turn right. I mean, it doesn't even suggest that those kinds of things will happen. So. I'm going to leave you with this, that if uh, if you deny this project, you're sending a message to the general business community. And developers that if a quality company like In-N-Out, after a year and a half and several hundred thousand dollars. Can't get an approval, who do you think is going to come here and want to go through that aggravation? Remember the bowling alley. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I need to take a break.
Okay.
Okay.
So next, and, and sorry I missed you earlier, uh, Bob Grand.
Just so you know, I'm, I'm still working, okay? I'm the old brother Jared and I'm also Sean, oh, Sean's older brother, but. The pandemic definitely has wiped out the theater business. There isn't one chain. Minor or major that has not filed for economic relief or bankruptcy. As evidenced by the templex in Santa Maria closing this week. That is regal. They filed major bankruptcy and all their dead wood is going by the wayside. They're only keeping the, the stuff that's viable. And even then. I lay you odds, they're not going to make it. They're, they're three billion upside down. They're leveraged at seventy eight plus percent. I don't know about you, but I've never been able to get a loan above fifty percent. And they just got a three, thirty million dollar line of credit. Just to keep their doors open. So with that being said. Just to bring you guys up to speed. That theater has been totally stripped. It's a single purpose building. It is not opening to become a movie theater ever again. If you were to try to open it in its current state. It would take a million and a half to two and a half million dollars just to get it back in the shape it was. Okay? And there isn't too many people that would be willing to take a zero return in, on investment. Or negative return on investment and do that again. So we actually started shopping. The theater and the property prior to the pandemic because it was our worst performing theater. We reached out to metropolitan theaters. There was interest shown soon as the pandemic hit. Bye bye. They have their own problems. They're trying to keep their doors up. They had, they were in the middle of a fourteen plex bill that. Costs them millions and millions of dollars to get old and it's just now open. But to make a long story short, we purposely went out and uh. Got a good commercial realtor, Tom, and uh, my brother wasn't kidding. Whenever we went to LA, which was quite common with my dad, we, we were, we were an In-N-Out family. But what In-N-Out doesn't seem to get, no offense, is McDonald's is still going to be very busy because you don't have happy. And then you have kids, happy meals are bargaining too. So, uh. Yeah, but now you're in trouble because they have adults. So I, I'm just, I had to make a little bit of fun, but i- in all due seriousness. We were very excited that In-N-Out showed interest in our property because it's a good, high quality. I mean, there isn't, no offense to the city of Buellton, but there aren't too many cities in the state of California. That would turn down an In-N-Out franchise. I know for a fact, I live in Madera, California. We just approved ours, but Hanford. I think had a petition for three years to try to get you to even show interest in, in the city. So it, there, there's a lot of people out there that really enjoy In-N-Out. And uh, I think with everybody's cooperation here, we can make this work. I can tell you for a fact. That we went through this whole thing with the uh. Easements before, when we did the theater expansion. If with possible lawsuits, everything flying. We had lawyers here, we had lawyers here. This was really fun time to be. In, in the planning commission, but long story short is Fred Frederickson built this project with cross easements. Shared easements and I can tell you for a fact right now, McDonald's could not get their deliveries or their trash dumped unless they use my parking. Okay, same with the Marriott. All the delivery trucks, all the trash trucks come through my parking lot. Or use my parking lot to stage their deliveries because they can't tie up the drive through lane or the parking at McDonald's. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your decision.
Thank you. Next is Rose Dieters.
Good evening. I just want to read a letter that I sent because I'm very passionate about what I said and I know several of my neighbors are very passionate. Dear planning commissioners, I'm writing to respectfully request you deny the project application. For a new drive through restaurant located by fifteen McMurray Road. Accessors parcel number one thirty seven dash one seven zero dash four six. I reside on Oakville Drive in the Vineyard Village Community. Buellton is a small town where everyone knows everyone. The town sponsors many events, bringing everyone together to have fun. In-N-Out Burger is a highly desirable, well-known fast food restaurant known for its great burgers and fries and the long drive. known for its great burgers and fries and the long drive-through lines. I am very concerned about the traffic impact on McMurray Road. What will the impact be on the traffic when the lines flow out onto McMurray Road? The road is a two-lane road with already many traffic obstacles. The big rigs park along the northbound side of the road, even at times in the center of the road between the double yellow lines. The Marriott gets overflow onto McMurray Road when buses arrive for transportation and special events. Just last week, two buses were parked on McMurray Road along the curb in the traffic lane out front of the Marriott. The weekends bring families traveling through Beelton, stopping for gas and food. Adding another drive-through at this location will cause undue stress in the area and will have a negative impact on adjacent neighborhoods. How can the residents at Vineyard Village make safe turns from Valley Vineyard Circle onto McMurray Road with all of the congestion? Our neighborhood already has safety concerns. The Motel Six attracts many unfavorable travelers, bringing crime in our neighborhood. In-N-Out Burger is open until one AM most nights. The town closes early and the roads are quiet after nine PM. The late hours have the potential to bring in more crime and give transient slash homeless population a place to congregate in the late night hours. Beelton is a great place to live. We currently have McDonald's, the Habit Burger, Carl's Jr., Eddie's Grill, Jack in the Box, and a few restaurants offering burgers and fries. Do we really need another fast food burger restaurant? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Carla Head is next.
Uh, Mead.
Oh, Mead, sorry. Yeah, see, I can't, I need to put my readers.
I'm gonna introduce myself anyway. Hi, I'm Carla Mead. I live at five five nine Monticello, um, in Vineyard Village. So Commissioners, thank you for your careful consideration of the proposal, the proposed In-N-Out project on McMurray, McMurray. I'm speaking tonight to request that you deny this project application. There are many reasons why I do not support this project, but before I outline those, I would like you to answer the question, it's rhetorical. Um, if this In-N-Out was built fifty yards from my house, what I wanted there? Or if this was in my neighborhood, Thumbelina, Rancho de Maria, River U Park, or one of the neighborhoods like this, which are all beautiful, um, would you, would you support this project? If your answer is no, then you have a civic duty to deny this application. I live in Vineyard Village and have one of the homes that will be directly impacted by this fast food chain for a number of reasons. A massive traffic influx, sorry to bring it up again, an increase in security concerns, property values decreasing, and a negative impact on our air quality. Everyone knows how terrible the traffic on the two forty six and McMurray intersection is. I cannot fathom adding in more cars to this intersection. To my understanding, the traffic study states that some section of this roads will see a seventy-two percent increase in traffic. We have seen what In-N-Out has done in Santa Barbara, cars backed up what's, what seems like miles. Our roads cannot handle this type of influx. Who will be in charge of mitigating traffic in in issues and accidents, which there will obviously be? Our Sheriff's Department, which is already stretched thin, it's my understanding they've already written a letter. We will not be taking traffic out of the equation. It's a huge part of the equation that we can solve by not having the equation in the first place. In addition, it is clear to me that this project is dependent on employees to move the cars quickly. With all the staffing shortages that we have all experienced, I cannot say I'm confident that there will be enough hires here in the valley to actually do what they want to accomplish. They will end up outsourcing the jobs to current employees in Santa Maria, a fact I know because I spoke to the representatives of In-N-Out Burger. Dave King, who looks to be our newly elected mayor, ran on two platforms, which were, one, keeping Beelton small and safety. Building this In-N-Out is in direct contrast to that message. It makes Beelton a truck stop for thousands of cars, referenced in the traffic study, who are not invested in our town or care about its residents. This is not keeping our city small. Our neighborhood in Thumbelina as well has experienced vandalism, minor theft that has been directly traced back to the section of McMurray, and I'm concerned that adding even more transient traffic would can, would increase our safety concerns. I have heard that the argument that this is, oh, sorry, I've heard an argument that this will bring an incredible amount of revenue to the city. Do you know what else brings revenue? My property taxes and the hundred and fifty-five people that live in Vineyard Village. There are, my husband and I are full-time residents of Beelton. We live and work here. I know there's a conception that Beelton is just a bedroom community, but the fact of the matter is, many people now work from home and have chosen this place. I'm going to run out of time, so in short, I've just asked the Commission to consider the environmental impact of twenty-five cars sitting in a drive-through. Do you want your children? Do you want to be breathing that disgusting air? Have you done a sequoia study? Lastly, please do the right thing, vote against this. We can do better. Beelton is better. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Kathy Vreeland.
All right, good evening, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, Kathy Vreeland, I'm a Beelton resident, forty-six Freedom Place. Um, Beelton has a good reputation when it comes to development and being a business-friendly city. We've seen significant growth over the years, and I would encourage the Commission and City Council to continue to work closely with the applicants and fi- find ways to create a win-win. I would like to share my thoughts about having In-N-Out come to Beelton. First off, it's a huge compliment for Beelton to have In-N-Out wanna locate their restaurant here. I have attended various retail shows and looked for businesses to come to Beelton, but was told our demographics didn't work for them, or they weren't looking to expand in our market. Having this company show interest in Beelton speaks volumes, and if approved, would most likely spur the interest of other businesses to also look at and possibly locate in Beelton. Any successful business is gonna generate traffic, otherwise they wouldn't be in business. I would think we would wanna champion successful business growth here in Beelton. I know there are other projects proposed for McMurray Road, and I find it a bit unfair to hold In-N-Out accountable for any traffic issues that may arise on McMurray Road. Do we just shut down any future developments on McMurray Road because we've reached our capacity for cars in the turn lane? I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do think there may be some possible solutions that we could mitigate, that could help mitigate the traffic at Highway two forty six and McMurray Road by directing it to the exit at Rufus T. Buell Drive. One way could be for the In-N-Out app, uh, maybe they could identify what exit to take at Rufus T. Buell, which is the following, that that's been referred to as Damasa, I think y'all know the name change. They could also work with Caltrans to identify on the restaurant signs of what exit to take. Those are the blue and white signs that we see along the highway identify lodging and restaurants. Businesses pay to have their names on those signs, and they could also put the exit number on there. I know when I'm traveling, if I see an exit number on a sign, I take that exit. Lastly, in any marketing or outreach done by In-N-Out, maybe we can ask them to identify, excuse me, Rufus T. Buell Drive as the exit to take. I think it's so important to work with developers on projects coming in and try to find a middle ground or a solution rather than a resounding, I'm sorry, responding with a resounding no. I realize it can be easier said than done, but I also worry that Beelton would get the reputation that we are not business-friendly and cause any future developments to look elsewhere. I would encourage the Commission to think about these solutions and discuss uh, if these would be options for the applicant. I know there are many people for and others against this project, which comes with any development. But hopefully with some discussion and planning, we can create a win-win for the city, our community, and the applicant. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. Oh, well, unless is, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
Will you fill out a speaker slip later?
Uh, yeah. My name is Kellen Tobin. I live at uh, five five four Montecello Lane in uh, Vineyard Village. I just wanna say I've lived in several neighborhoods in which In-N-Out has had establishments. Newberry Park, traffic on the Newberry Road, Westlake Village, which required them to uh, decrease the amount of time that they've had to have people in their drive-through. Lived in Camarillo, wasn't bad, but it's worse now. And I've lived in Galita, which has gone from bad to worse. So, I mean, we're all saying traffic, but you know, it's me. That's, it's my turnout. I mean, he doesn't live there, none of these people live there. That's, you know, they can say traffic study and whatnot, but at the end of the day, I'm coming home, am I gonna be stuck behind cars? Am I gonna be stuck at two forty six? I mean, sorry to be emotional about this, but this is, this is where I live. I came here, small town, love to have In-N-Out, but not where they want to be. Have them two forty six, the old Burger King, whatnot. Why right where everything is? So, said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone now? Okay, got another one?
Good evening. Sorry, this is my first time, so I'm gonna try and keep to uh, what we're supposed to do here. My name is Lucy. I'm a lifetime resident of Beelton. I live at three five three Odent Street in Thumbelina Village. Um, I'm torn, and I want to uh, take everything into consideration. But I also have to take my past, um, this village, this town, these people into consideration. I grew up in Beelton, Beelton, sorry, playing in a tomato field that is now Albertson's. I grew up in Beelton, playing in the field that is now Vineyard Village. I watched my first movie at the Parks Plaza Theater and watched um, My Secret of My, The Secret of My Success with Michael J. Fox. So Beelton is my heart. I love Beelton. Um, and I've seen the growth. Some of it great, some of it giving us the opportunity to see our children grow in this neighborhood. Um, I'm also in the industry where I see people develop and in real estate and buy their first homes and move to Beelton. So for me, I'm torn, I wanna um, take all into consideration, but I'm also a mom, and I also live in Beelton. So of course, I don't need to repeat the traffic, I think everybody has that on their mind. But taking consideration, we have proposed housing, I believe, all along McMurray Road that we'll see in the future. Um, so traffic is going to be an issue at any, most any point in time in Beelton. We're gonna have some pretty heavy stuff going on there. Um, currently, I have kids who attend schools. I live on one side, my kids go to school on the other side of Beelton. Um, I've had to race to the school because someone's sick or someone's injured. And driving on two forty six, trying to figure out how the quickest way I can get to the school, my exit plan is McMurray Road. So I drive down McMurray Road and take the backroads because I'm local and I know that. So those are things we wanna take into consideration as well as that that is a route of our current bus schedule. So our buses take McMurray Road to take kids to and from school. Um, those times may be outside of the busiest times of In-N-Out, but we do have days where kids get out of school early. Um, there is also bus pickup locations near there, so let's take that into consideration that our kids may be affected by this traffic um, in that manner. Law enforcement, we have an accident. Do we have enough representation at our law enforcement? Is our law enforcement staffed to deal with those traffic incidents on two forty six or McMurray Road? Will they be able to get there quickly enough as well as emergency vehicles to Vineyard Village where we have families who live there? Those are all things we have to take into consideration for the well-being of our, of our community. In-N-Out is open till one o'clock in the morning. I don't think there is anywhere else in Beelton that is. So our kids, our teenagers, will they be hanging out there at one o'clock in the morning? Possibly. Will we have supervision there? Maybe not. These are all things, of course, that we just have to keep in mind. Um, again, I'm torn. I want to love the idea. Um, but I want to also explore what this will mean to our Beelton. Um, there's currently a bike path there where we encourage people to exercise and do that along the bike path. Will this be a determinant for people wanting to go down McMurray Road because of the traffic? Um, currently, we have a group of people who pick up trash on McMurray Road. And if you've ever joined us, McMurray Road can provide a lot of trash for pickup. So again, are we taking that in consideration um, of what happens on McMurray Road? Um, I'm not gonna lie, my kids are a fan of In-N-Out. They are excited. They love the idea. So again, um, I'm in that industry where producing business for Beelton is what we do. Um, seeing growth in Beelton has not always been negative. But let's take into consideration everybody and everyone that we're affecting um, with the decision. I know you guys have a big decision on your hands, and I just hope that you guys do the best with the information provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Once again, Mark Levin on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I I wanted to uh, discuss just a couple of things that I heard, um, just to make a couple of points.
Why not? Should I, I think I should close the public comment, shouldn't I? Yeah, okay. Okay, so anyone else in the public that wants to speak? Okay.
I have a letter from a neighbor. You want me to read it or can we turn it into at this point?
You can turn it into us.
Right now?
Yeah. Oh, and just so the audience knows, I think I said this earlier, but um, we receive numerous letters from the community. Um, we do not read those letters into the, into the public hearing, but they are all available in the public record, so that will go into the public record. Okay, now, Mr. Mark.
Thank you. Um, I I'm not gonna uh, rehash the traffic. I think we've kind of discussed that enough. I I did kind of uh, en- enjoy Mr. Davidson's point, though. Um, we are angling our uh, highway signs specifically with the intention of capturing the drivers that have already passed two forty six. We do anticipate a a close to fifty fifty share of whatever highway traffic we have going between two forty six and Damascus. Um, beyond that, there were a couple of comments that I I just wanna clarify because they haven't really been discussed by either staff or me. Um, with regard to security concerns and homelessness, um, we have a a person from the Sheriff's Office here, and I think he can attest this. One place that um, transients or other people with nefarious intent might enjoy doing is being places where there are no lights on, where there are empty buildings, where there are no eyes on the street, which is currently what we have. Um, once we open, a- as we do stay uh, in business, we'll have people monitoring the outside. We have cameras on all uh, four sides of our building, as well as various other cameras that show people inside what's going on outside. Uh, our typical uh, standard operating procedure is having the manager come out and make sure people aren't loitering and they can leave the property. Uh, only after there is some degree of conflict will the Sheriff's Office be called. Um, in in general, it, we believe that actually makes this place much, much safer than it would otherwise be. Uh, there was a question regarding uh, SEQA studies. Uh, our project is categorically exempt from SEQA. Uh, I don't know if that was discussed earlier on. Uh, with regard to traffic in just the SEQA realm, uh, the state has switched over to what's called VMT analysis or vehicle miles traveled. We're under the threshold that would require any kind of SEQA-specific mitigation measures. Um, similarly, with regard to the air quality, uh, that has often studied and submitted to the file, um, it's just a real general overview. We're right next to a highway that kind of impacts the air quality far more than any individual business would. Um, with regard to staffing, you know, the Beelton Fall Festival was not a job fair, it was a other fair, but yeah, I think we had five or six different people at around ages, let's say fifteen to eighteen, ask if we're hiring. Uh, I I really don't think this is gonna be a problem for us. Um, we typically pay more than uh, our competitors do. We ask a lot more of them, but we pay more and and we give more. Um, with that, you know, i- in general, I I'd like to say that um, there's still a lot of this concern about comparing us to other locations, and that's fair. Uh, it's what people see. I I just wanna reiterate that this particular site at sixty-four thousand six hundred uh, square feet, it's just much larger, and it allows us a lot more room to accommodate our traffic and to make things flow better. So with that, again, I'm available for any questions. We also have our traffic engineer here. If you have any questions, Pam, thank you. And I guess I should mention, uh, please approve us.
Thank you. Um, further questions before we have comments? Anything?
No.
No, no question.
Um, I'm going to ask you back up, Mark. Um, I have a couple of questions and maybe for your traffic engineer too. Um, just kind of in a general sense. Um, again, most of the traffic study and our traffic issues and our tra- my, my personal traffic concern is on the one oh one north off-ramp onto the two forty six, and I'll just go through. Let's pretend we're driving. So we do that, we get to the stoplight, it's either red or green, and either way, if there's no traffic coming, we turn right, we cross two lanes of traffic, and then we And then we get into the left turn lane going on to McMurray. That is a very short, it's not even a block. It's like a three or four car queue. What I envision, and this is in our traffic reports, is that's gonna be the main traffic issue for all of this. Because once the four cars back up, then they back up over State Route two forty-six. They come down the off-ramp and they go onto the shoulder of the one oh one. I had suggested a couple of times ago, I believe, and Kathy Freeland has talked about this and I think you just mentioned it. If there's any way in all this traffic study, or if you have a good relationship with Caltrans, I don't know. If you can get traffic directed to the RT Buell exit. Because it's, I mean, that's what we just keep talking about. It's like signage. Your app directs people that way. I mean, all the locals are gonna know how to take the backroads. You know, that's really not a concern. My question kind of, my next question is. You guys push to have this be a public hearing. I'm kind of surprised that you pushed because the, the staff report is directing us to deny it. Is there a way we can, I'm gonna do a little negotiating here. Is there a way we can? Look at it with your traffic people and say, what if we continue this meeting? Instead of offering a denial or offering an approval. But let's address some of the traffic issues with your traffic engineer and with our staff. And could that be done in thirty days or something like that? I want to throw that out there.
So to answer the first question with regard to directing people to Rufus T. Buell or Damascus exit. The simple answer is yes. We can do everything in our power to do that. I, I think it was mentioned, the idea of our app. I can work with the team within In-N-Out that controls that. There might be a way to do this. It might be just a simple notation at the bottom. Please exit, you know, this, you know, off-ramp. That might solve a lot of the problem. And just with regard to signage, things like that, it can have dramatic effect. With regard to pushing for this date, I, I think that push was out of frustration that the traffic study. Approval process was taking as long as it was. Like I said, we submitted it to the city at the end of January and here we are in November. So we don't want the typical paralysis by analysis. I, I do think that. While, while time can heal some of these things, I am a little bit worried and that there's just, there's a very large gap between what our traffic engineer. Does and the way that we analyze sites and not just in Beelton, but really in every other place that I've done business in. As well as the way that Mr. Poole sees it. It's not that there's right or wrong. It's just that there's a very large gap to, to traverse. I'm not entirely sure that a month does that. However. Obviously, if the considerations for denial, frankly, you know, thirty days is not the worst thing in the world either. Let's, I would say table that idea until later, if possible.
Table the idea of tabling it?
If possible.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's it for questions. Now we'll go to comments, final comments. Commissioner Blockdike. Okay, Commissioner Leggett.
I think In-N-Out's great business. I love the burgers. It sounds like you treat employees right. Comes down to traffic. It will be popular. It will be an amenity to the valley, but to the neighborhood. That intersection, it is a big deal and. It's strange to me how there's two totally conflicting interpretations of the traffic report. So until there's some, and I, and I don't know how to analyze those and really choose which one is more accurate. So until there is some consensus and agreement among the city of Beelton. And your, your guy, I cannot approve this. So fix the traffic issue and I think that's the one thing that's holding us back.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I just want to remind everybody that when the theater was there. There was a lot of traffic for people getting to the theater and especially after the movie got out. But it only took me a couple of minutes to get over to two forty-six and on my way back over here. To my home. So. I know there are more people. There was only four thousand of us in Beelton then. Now there's five thousand. But I don't see it as a problem. I don't see traffic as a problem.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thanks, Mark, for, for your presentation and also thank the participation of our citizens. I look back and, and you see the development. I'm a homeowner in Thumbelina. And for thirty-four years, there had been nothing next to our, we live on free R, so there was open field where. Your houses are and traction supply are. There was nothing there for twenty-five of those years. And so. When those were built, we had to have numerous, the fourteen homeowners on Thumbelina. With Gavin Moore, the developer. So there has to be some give and take. There was a six-foot block wall. Now we have a ten-foot block wall. We didn't have three-story buildings there. We have two-story buildings there. We didn't get the underground electrical poles put in, but we got some concessions. And I, I think seeing this, that. In-N-Out has made some concessions. They've taken our recommendations and, and with landscaping. The decor, I, I think. At this time with Beelton having, well, so much the county or the country having a possible recession. We have a viable business here who they do a tremendous amount of community outwork. They play, pay well, that helps our citizens. So I see them as an asset for City of Beelton. If we were to consider not taking them, what's gonna happen with the two hotels right in Vineyard Village? Or when the senior center opens or when this opens? There's a lot of what-ifs. Here we have something not show-ready, but very close to it. And I'm hoping. Maybe with Patty's suggestion that. Maybe table, not so much tabling it, just coming to a happy medium, but I, at this time, I would be for the. The project and I, I think it'll be an asset to the, to the community.
Thank you. And I think you make a good candidate for chair next year. Okay, so. Here, here's. Here's my, let's see, I think I called it a soapbox last time. Actually, Mark, you really helped me out. I was gonna, I had my speech. I have two speeches prepared always, but. The first one. Let's see. So anyway, I'll begin. Anyway, I was very excited when this first came to, to the planning commission. I'm a big fan of In-N-Out, but I am a big fan of our local community too. So I have to toe both lines. You already gave this speech. I was just going to say, and Art's helped me out with this too, but. It's a very successful company. It provides quality, affordable, fast food. You're a great employer, pay and benefits. Good community partner. I know your owner's very philanthropic. All your properties are well-maintained. I travel the one oh one a lot, north and south, a lot more north now than I go south. But it seems like, as I, through the years, and this, this goes way back, but I've seen. A couple of your properties along the way where. Maybe thirty years ago or twenty-five years ago, there were traffic issues in, on the property itself and flowing out. And I've seen changes made through the years. So I know you, you must have good relationships with Caltrans and, and other local. Local cities. Honestly, I hoped that you'd come and be able to mitigate some of our traffic concerns. Again, the biggest one of all is the one on, on the two forty-six, I'm sorry, one oh one north. To the two forty-six to McMurray. I'm gonna float this right now. Since you said you didn't want thirty days. I'm going to make a motion to. Continue it for sixty days to see if you can really address the traffic issues and not. Not just that maybe, in part of that, I see we got a report and we haven't had a chance to read that. I don't know if it's in there. But that's my motion is to continue it, not approve or deny. No, you can't speak right now. So I think I can. Speak to that.
I, I would advise the planning commission that, that the issue here before you is one of an application that's been submitted by a particular applicant. For a city permit. The underlying. A, a, any underlying agreements or negotiations between property owners selling and purchasing property. Really doesn't enter into this. Now, if the applicant is not willing to, to wait those sixty days. The applicant could withdraw the application. The applicant could, I, you know, could. Appeal this decision to the city council. There, there are other avenues, but I, I'm not sure that the, that the, the private business dealings. Between the property owners are really the purview of the planning.
Thank you. Okay, so I will make the motion to continue it for sixty days. To try to work out the major traffic issues that have been presented by staff. We'll see where that goes. Is there a second? Nope. Okay, let's have.
Madam Chairman, I would make it for forty-five days.
Okay. Good, good. Okay.
If the recommendation is to. Delay and I would love to hear what, you know, Commissioner Look that has to say about this. I don't think we've, we've heard, but. If that is the case, honestly, it could probably be less time than that. I, I don't feel that. It's gonna be a ton of additional information that needs to be collected. We, we've done all this already. We've collected as much information. As quite literally any application has for the city of Beelton. There's just not much more. It's, it's running numbers. If necessary, though, I can have our traffic engineer speak to the letter that you held up that has been submitted to the record. If you have any questions about that specifically. But that, that, I.
Yeah, let's, let's do that at the, if we decide to go forward with the, with tabling it for thirty or forty-five days. We can address that later because we haven't had a chance to read it. It just came out tonight.
Unfortunately, in this case, we were only provided with AT's comment letter. Just a, a few days ago ourselves, so we haven't had the chance to go over everything in detail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion?
I will make the motion to table for forty-five days or. To continue it for forty-five days or less.
Madam Chair, the, the. Forty-five days would take us to a, a, the January fifth meeting roughly. And so a, a continue it to a date certain might be a better approach than, than a certain number of days.
Okay. Well. So January fifth, but then that would be a new commission. Does that?
Potentially there.
Yeah.
That's, if, if you wanted to go shorter than that, then the planning director.
Yeah, so the, the last two meetings of the year we have this year would be in two weeks, December first. Or in about a month on December fifteenth.
Okay.
Then I'll make the motion to go to December first, if that works for you guys.
Well, well, if, if we're continuing it, there's no need to, to a date certain, no need for.
For the fifteenth?
If that's what the commission wants to do, I'm not. I won't be here for the fifteenth.
Okay. Okay.
And I would, in that motion then, and okay, go ahead.
I guess I have a question. If we're continuing it, is it also under a condition that there will be an agreement or a discussion between? What's the objective of going out? Is to have a resolution with the traffic, about the traffic?
Yes.
To have a further, more in-depth.
Yes.
So one of the things that I'd like to make the table. A few weeks ago, I actually called up Mr. Poole and asked for a meeting of this nature already. And, and essentially he denied the request. If the request of this commission is to instead just require that we meet, that's fine. It might be a little bit of a challenge to have a true meeting of the minds and agreement. But again, I, I think that. Under the circumstances. I, I, I do agree that there needs to be some kind of hard thing that needs to be discussed at this meeting that, that would. Bring you guys to a conclusion. And if it is just a continuous disagreement of engineers, does a third party come into play maybe? Does, does a separate transit engineer that is not necessarily affiliated with either In-N-Out or the city, does that? Get us to where we need to go?
I know, we don't contract with other parties, do we?
The typical arrangement is either the city's traffic engineer would conduct the traffic study. Or in this case, there was the applicant's traffic consultant conducted the traffic study and our traffic consultant. Conducted the peer review. If, if. The planning commission felt that it would be of value to have a third-party traffic consultant review. The traffic, that's certainly something that they could consider. It would be at the cost of the applicant, however.
Yeah, but that probably wouldn't fit into our timing.
Correct.
Yeah.
I will add to that Caltrans would need to review and approve any improvements. On two forty-six or the one oh one off-ramps. And so that process is, as we've seen, can take a very long time. So that would be if the traffic improvements were worked out to where the planning commission. Felt they could approve the project, that would be a condition of approval for Caltrans review and approval of the traffic improvements.
And we would be okay with that condition.
But that would be a condition of approval.
Right, and that, that would be. Yet to be guaranteed that Caltrans would approve those improvement, improvements.
You know. Maybe honestly, the easiest thing to do is honestly just take a vote. I, I think that I, I'm a little bit worried that. This process is gonna continue, you know, just on and on. Like I said, we already started this process back in November. Frankly, we should have been in front of you guys five, six months ago. But I'd like to hear the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll rescind the motion.
Okay.
As stated.
Okay, and do we have them? We.
I am concerned.
Public.
He said he had a meeting with him outside of this meeting.
Okay.
At the start of this.
No.
No, stop. We can't take public comment right now. Just to educate the audience or anybody who's listening. It's a requirement for city, for planning commission and or city council. When we meet with an applicant or a representative of the applicant, we have to disclose it as ex parte. That is what we've done. That is the legal pro, that is the legal process. Okay, now, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny the conditional, conditional use permit as stated.
I will second that motion.
Roll call. Commissioner Leggett?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdike?
Aye.
No.
Commissioner Sarkia? Vice Chair Mercado?
No.
Chair Hamon?
No.
Okay, so that motion does not pass, so if there's another motion to be made.
Well, I'll make the motion to.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the conditional use permit with Kara's recommendations of having the third party. Is that what, how you, you stated?
She had Caltrans.
Or Caltrans to
Oh, so I will just first, go ahead. You can clarify. She recommended the third party, and then she was talking about Caltrans, so.
I will just note, um, very briefly that the findings for approval for this project at this point could not be made. So um, if an approval.
So basically, just to add to that, um, if the direction of the planning commission is to approve the conditional use permit, we would have to bring back a resolution for approval in which we would have to be able to make those findings. And so if that is the direction of the planning commission staff, we'll go back and take a look at the findings. The, the findings that are required for a conditional use permit and bring back a resolution to that effect. Um, but just to keep in mind that, yes, we would have to be able to make those, those findings.
And do you think that would be possible by December fifteenth meeting?
We could certainly um, you know, go, staff could certainly go back and um, take a look at the, those findings and bring back something.
Okay.
The December fifteenth.
Okay. Okay, so motion approved with conditions that are yet to be deter, or the motion to deny was denied.
Did not yet.
I believe there were, the, the motion you're looking for is uh directing staff to return to the planning commission as quickly as possible with a resolution to approve the conditional use.
Okay, thank you. Exactly what Mr. Scott Wolf said, or city manager. Okay.
Do it, or you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
I'll do just what Scott said. As stated.
Second.
Okay, and now we'll call again. I guess.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep, uh, Vice Chair Mercado?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia? Uh, Commissioner Liggett?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdike? Chair Hamon?
Aye. Okay, so
So.
Your new motion is approved with conditions to be forthcoming. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give members of the audience a couple of minutes to exit and take discussions outside, because we still have a, we still have a meeting. Thank you, thank you for joining.
We request that you come back with a new motion or come back with conditions to approve, however. However, if you could not prove this now, if you're requesting to deny this now, how are you gonna go about approving it? Do you have to come, do you have to create one? Or are you gonna go back and revisit yourselves and try to?
So the recommendation that I heard from the planning commission was to bring back a resolution for approval um with the conditions um, at, you know, with conditions of approval for the project to include the Caltrans condition. Um, but also, as Kara noted, and um, I was trying to convey, is that we have to come back also with findings for approval.
Yes.
For that prod, for the project. We will be working um, between now and then to um, on those findings and on those conditions um, in order to bring back a resolution on the fifteenth.
And you may not find this. There's no guarantee that you will. We will face, we will return to the planning commission with findings um, for approval, as that's been your direction. The findings for approval will be made in light of the fact that there are conditions which accompany the, the resolution. And the planning commission will have to reaffirm your belief at that time or your findings at that time, that given the conditions of approval that accompany that resolution, you believe that all of the findings required by the municipal code can be made. If you get to that point and you read the conditions and you find, you, you can't convince yourself that those conditions meet the intent of the municipal code, then you will need to deny the project. It's, that's, that's how it's worked.
And would they have to bring back another resolution for approval? Or can they do have to?
We, we will, we will, we will.
We will work that out between now and then.
Thank you.
All right, so we still have a meeting. Is it any other business? Okay, written communications, none. Finding commissioner comments other than what was on the agenda tonight?
I'll say that I have decided not to reapply to come back next year. It was a tough decision. I really, really enjoyed being here, but having a, a child and challenging work schedule and lack of childcare. It's not good for me right now. Hopefully one day I can join the guys again. So I really do appreciate it.
I'd like to echo all that too. I, I just really enjoy learning the process, and I'm still learning the process.
We need a landscape specialist.
Yeah, I know, we did tree guy.
He lives in Two Lakes?
Yeah. You guys better go back to school.
And it is, and it is fun to work with people that all have different varied interests and see things differently. Even, even uh reading the uh WeWatch, and I go, wow, people really study this.
Yeah.
We need to look at.
Nancy's very good. Yeah.
Thanks for keeping us in line.
I'm assuming it's Bob Poole. Okay. Yeah. Any, any other comments, Mr. Sarkia, uh, Mr. Vice Chair?
Uh, no, just to, well, yes, to thank both Erin and Bob for their service. Uh, I think they both then announce any job and they bring different perspectives, and I think that made our jobs easier here. Uh, only been on for two years with these two gentlemen, but on previous uh commissions, it's always a pleasure to work with knowledgeable people and people who uh, like this evening, take things to heart and come out with valid defenses or offenses and uh makes it easier to look at both sides. So I thank you for it.
You are.
And I too, thank you both, and it has been a pleasure. I don't have anything further. Planning Director reports.
Sure.
We want to talk about the bowling alley.
Sure, so I will mention um, that, you know, at the last meeting, um, the commissioners had requested that an item be brought back to discuss the waypoint project and sort of just the, you know, in response to um, the property owner coming and speaking regarding the issue she's been having um, with the processing of the project. Um, and we are looking into those issues and in order to bring back a full discussion item. Um, the intent was originally to bring it back at this meeting, but in light of the two large projects that we had tonight and the need to do a little bit more research before we brought something back to the commission for discussion. Um, the idea is to bring back discussion on that item at one of the December meetings.
Perfect.
What we plan to do. Um, and in addition to that, um, yes, I'd like to just echo, thank, and thank each of you for your service to the city of Beelton as part of the planning commission. Um, and, you know, we are, as another note, um, along those same lines, there are currently three seats open on the planning commission, so we just encourage those um, wanting to apply to apply. The deadline is November thirtieth. So um, those that are interested need to get their applications in soon, so.
Yeah.
That's correct.
His terms up, he has to reapply. Yeah. Um, oh, so please, both of you come to December first meeting, because we'll say, maybe. Possibly.
I'll be, I'll be your.
Okay, and Andrea, were you done?
I am.
With that, we will adjourn at eight thirty-two.